I'll order the city council meeting for May sixth due to some technical difficulties again. We are, um, tonight we'll be recording audio only, no visual. Um, clerk, if you could please take the role.
Mayor Schwartz. Member Karen.
Here.
Member Chaney Huggett. Member Gates.
Here.
Mayor Proton Traver.
Here.
Underhill. Wolfers Burger. We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you. Do not believe we have anybody here tonight per invocation. So we've.
Mayor Pro Tim, may I move that we, uh, excuse Mayor Schwartz, member Underhill and member Wolfers Burger from tonight's meeting?
Have a motion of support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign. Motion passes. Now we will move forward with, uh, pledge of allegiance. Next, I'll look for approval of our agenda, which we have public comment on agenda items followed by consent agenda. Which tonight has our city council minutes from the work session, April fifteenth and regular session on April fifteenth. City bills totaling four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and six cents. Pastrami Joe sidewalk use permit, traffic control order request one nineteen and one twenty. Parking lot designation update for municipal lot six and lot seven. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget to schedule a public hearing. And the Marshall Rotary Club one hundredth anniversary. Followed by presentations and recognitions, National Police Week proclamation and National Public Works Week proclamation. And moving down to public hearing for the chapter five fifty-three point zero three electrical rates ordinance amendment. And then reports and recommendations, dangerous buildings official appointment, police grants, submittal requests, Verizon Water Tower site lease extension. And then public comment on non-agenda items followed by council and manager communications.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor, say aye. No, same sign. Motion passes. So this brings us to our public comment on agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak, please address the mayor Pro Tim with your name and address. Again, we don't have visuals tonight, so that would be important. Uh, and each person is given a maximum of three minutes to speak. Good evening.
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty-two West Green Street. Uh, again, I object to the minutes of the last meeting. Uh, again, you seem to think that it's sufficient to merely say that somebody got up and made a public comment when you do not specify what the substance of the comments were. And there couldn't be a more blatant and arrogant, uh, display of, uh, indifference and actually misconduct in office. And, uh, which again is a statutory crime pursuant to MCL seven fifty-five oh five. Maybe these guys want to jump in on the fun. Uh, and look it up. MCL seven fifty-five oh five. Deals with all common law offenses which are not specified in the statutes. And misconduct in office is a common law offense. And it is composed of three elements, misfeasance, malfeasance, and non-feasance. Uh, and it is a crime and our law enforcement should step up to the plate and enforce those sort of crimes in order to ensure that we don't have a continuance of the corrupt government activity that we've been seeing all along since going all the way back to the all Oakland debacle, the monopolization of the garbage service hoax. All these things have happened in defiance to the will of the people. And again, you know, those minutes are absolutely reflective of the weight that it shows that you people are, are giving to our comments. Now the constitution requires that you take our instruction, Article One, Section Three. And you're not there to just go willy-nilly and satisfy the whims of private interests. Uh, even though it's backed up by the, by the governor, you know, you should know better. Uh, but obviously you don't, you know, as long as the governor and big money are, uh, uh, waving some big numbers around, uh, seems like the, uh, there's been a, uh, no reluctance to capitulate to the, uh, overcoming of constitutional requirements. So been disappointing so far and expect to see more disappointment unless you guys change your mind. I'll be back.
Thank you, Barry. Anyone else?
Hello, uh, Regis Klinger, three, four, eight, uh, Butler Court, Marshall, Michigan. I just had a, a reading, I'm gonna say, which would affect this meeting agenda and all meeting agendas and all meetings for the city. It says, statement of purpose, every citizen in the city is entitled to have complete confidence in the integrity of the process of local government. Each representative of the people of the city, whether elected or appointed, paid or unpaid, serving on a council, committee, commission, or as an employee, shares the responsibility for earning and retraining, retaining the public's trust. The city's public officials must faithfully discharge the duties of their office in the best interest of the city. Recognizing the public interest must be primary and the behavior above reproach. Even the appearance of a public official's personal gain or benefit at the expense of the city may undermine the public's confidence in the fairness of the process of city government. That is the preamble to the code of ethics for Marshall City. I hope you review that, think along in heart about it. I would also urge that the city have, uh, session with the public about the mega site and Ford. So they can get some answers and that they can ask questions of the city and of Ford. Thank you.
Thanks, Regis. Anyone else? Okay. See, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Again, we have city council minutes. From work session, April fifteenth, regular session, April fifteenth, city bills totaling four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six thirty-seven oh six. The Pastrami Joe sidewalk use permit, traffic control order request one nineteen and one twenty. The parking lot designation update municipal lot six and seven. Schedule a public hearing for fiscal year budget twenty twenty-five. And then the Marshall Rotary Club one hundredth anniversary.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion. Or, any discussion? Okay. I have a roll call, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tom Traver.
Yes.
Motion carries, your honor.
Thank you. Next is our presentations and recognitions. We have two tonight. Uh, first one being the National Police Week proclamation. City manager Perry, wanna brief us a little bit on that?
Actually, Chief Linkard, if you wanna approach the podium.
Okay, uh, well, uh, coming up here, uh, May fifteenth is, uh, the National Police Officers Memorial Day, uh, which was, uh, designated in nineteen sixty-two by, um, John F. Kennedy. Uh, so, uh, along with that is, uh, the week that, that is presented, whatever week that is, is proclaimed Police Week. So the, uh, this coming, uh, May twelfth through the eighteenth is, uh, National Police Week. And so there's a recognition, obviously, of, of that, uh, by their other citizens. Uh, you know, this is a time for us in the law enforcement fields, you know, it's a time to honor those officers that, um, you know, gave their, the ultimate sacrifice, uh, protecting and serving their communities. And it's just a time for us to, to remember them and, uh, give our thanks to them, so.
Absolutely. I do have a proclamation to read, so I will go ahead and read that now. National Police Week. National Police Week, May twelfth to eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. Whereas each year during the month of May, one week is dedicated to recognize and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. The twenty twenty-four Police Week will be held May twelfth to May eighteenth. And whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Marshall Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently twenty-four thousand sixty-seven law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including six hundred and sixty-seven members in the state of Michigan. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas two hundred and eighty-two new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including one hundred and eighteen officers killed in twenty twenty-three and one hundred and sixty-four officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-six candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of fallen officers and their families, then US flags should be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Marshall will observe May twelfth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as National Police Week in the city of Marshall and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. So thank you, chief and staff, for all that you do, putting yourself in front of harm's way. Uh, we couldn't, we couldn't be here without people like you supporting us and, uh, protecting us, so thank you.
Thank you.
And our next proclamation, will Marguerite step up?
Mayor.
National Public Works Week proclamation, go ahead.
Bye. Uh, good evening, thank you. Uh, every year for the past, um, sixty, well, yeah, about sixty years since nineteen sixty, the, um, American Public Works Association has dedicated a week, um, in support and honor of our public service, public works professionals, um, it's called National Public Works Week. And, um, this year it is, um, May nineteenth, the week of May nineteenth. Uh, and in recent years, there's been a theme every year, um, uh, consistent with what the industry is seeing across public works and this year's is advancing quality of life for all. And allows for, um, us as a city and our staff to focus on, um, the, the service and efforts, uh, that our public works professionals, um, make to, uh, improve our city, right, working in all facets of, uh, the area of the city. So, uh, in addition to just honoring them tonight, we are also, um, hosting an open house for the public on May twenty-third from five to seven PM at our DPW garage. And, um, we will have our equipment and other information out to, um, share with the public. And included in your report is the, um, artwork and invitation for that event. Uh, tonight, Phil Smith, our DPW superintendent is here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Marguerite. So I will go ahead and read our proclamation. National Public Works Week, May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four. We'll get you a new dress. Twenty twenty-four, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital perform, vital importance of, uh, excuse me. Twenty twenty-three threw me off. My start order, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Marshall. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Marshall to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year twenty twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Vietnam. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Marshall will observe May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Thank you. Bill, you wanna step up?
There you go, thank you.
All right, that moves us down to a public hearing for chapter fifty-three point oh three electric rates ordinance amendment. Derek, if you could brief us on that, please.
Absolutely. Um, the Marshall City Charter, Section eleven oh four, authorized the city council to set public utility service rates. This is accomplished by the City of Marshall ordinance, Chapter fifty-three, which governs the rates and rate methodology for the water, sewer, and electric, uh, utilities of the city. While recently reviewing the ordinance, a rate-setting procedural inconsistency was discovered between the three utilities. We are recommending that Section fifty-three point zero three be amended to incorporate language similar to water and sewer rate setting and provide for the electric rates to be set by city council resolution. Following the public hearing, um, we recommend that you enact ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three, an ordinance to amend the City of Marshall Code of Ordinances, Section fifty-three point zero three, electric rates, and direct the city clerk to publish the ordinance in full. You've seen this several times, um, actually, there was a couple of meetings ago where we did the introduction, but we had published the draft, uh, ordinance, uh, in error. So again, this is why the last meeting, it was set again for the public hearing. So again, after the public hearing, we're requesting that you, uh, enact this ordinance.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, you have three minutes to do so, please use your, tell us your name and address for the record. Barry Wayne.
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, again, six twenty-two West Green Streets. Uh, this follows along with the things that I've been telling the new city council going years and years back. Every so often, you gotta bump up the electric rates, uh, and all you're doing is following a, a pattern of entropy. You can't beat the second law of thermodynamics. Uh, and over time, uh, it takes more energy to actually accomplish the same amount of work. So little by little by little by little, uh, we're having to use more energy to accomplish the, the same things, but even yet, we still want to do more stuff. So instead of realizing where the overarching danger of this progression is in the having to destroy good farmland to put in these solar fields, uh, we should maybe start thinking about not having to be so reliant on what are called exosomatic energy transfer systems, uh, energy transfer among dead objects as opposed to, uh, endosomatic energy transfer systems, which is what is found in the living world. Uh, again, whenever you have an economy that is predominantly based in agricultural activity and living systems, you actually do have, uh, a progression of economic abundance. Uh, but when you start relying on machinery, electricity, non-living things, objects, and they start breaking down, uh, and the more you start relying on them, the more they break down, uh, you're going in a, a reverse spiral going downward. Uh, and what's it gonna take, you know, what level of ruination of the city is it gonna take in order for the decision-makers to understand that they have to comply not only with city ordinances, but with the laws of physics and the laws of supply and demand? I mean, the, the whole EV power industry is tanked and it's never gonna recover. And no matter what kind of ER, uh, efforts, no matter what kind of name changing, uh, you know, by saying it's now the modernization site or whatever, that doesn't make it any better. Still a mistake, and until you change your ways, it will be recognized as such.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? See, now I'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion to enact ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three, an ordinance to amend the City of Marshall Code of Ordinances, Section fifty-three point oh three, electric rates, and direct the city clerk to publish the ordinance in full.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion?
I would just say to clarify for the public, in case anyone isn't aware, and correct me if I characterize this not well, but, uh, what we're talking about is, um, adjusting the way that electric rates are set so that it's the same as other utility rates in the city. We're not actually setting a rate today. We're talking about creating a uniform, consistent process in which rates are set.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates. Mayor Pro Tom Traver.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Motion carries, your honor.
Thank you. Moves us down to reports and recommendations, first being dangerous buildings official appointment. Eric, if you were able to brief us.
I think Mayor Pro Time Council. Uh, this past fall, one oh seven North Fountain Street, uh, was damaged in fire. And right after the conclusion of the fire investigation, the building inspector condemned the structure, uh, unlivable. As we per or the past several months, we were working with the city attorney's office, trying to find the best way forward and addressing this. There's no estate, uh, that's been open on the property, uh, so there's no one to serve on trying to get the property, uh, fixed up or, or demolished. The attorney of war suggested when the dangerous buildings were out, which is an ordinance that we adopted in two thousand and five, which allows the appointment of a hearing officer to hear the cases and determine, um, best foot forward on addressing the issues on the, uh, property. Attorney of wars suggested the appointment of Mr. Bob Vertalka. Uh, his, uh, resume is included in the, um, packet. He's well-versed in this area, serves as the dangerous building official for at least four other communities. Um, and this will allow us to start addressing, uh, a property that's really bringing the neighborhood down. I mean, it's a, a loss at this point. And it's something we need to move forward on removing, unfortunately. So staff recommends, um, adoption of Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh nine, um, which will report Mr. Vataka as the dangerous building official for the city of Marshall.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion?
I would just say thank you to staff for your attention to this issue. I know we've had a couple of blighted dangerous properties like this that we've been able to quickly demolish and get rid of. And I, I think that's great for the city, so thank you.
Take a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 No, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have Josh step up, the police grants submittal request.
Mayor Pro Tim, counsel. Last year, uh, we conducted a handful of assessments to identify operational needs and goals. We use these assessments, uh, to set goals for two thousand twenty-four. His goals included, uh, increase in recruitment efforts and staffing levels, and increased, uh, community engagement, uh, improvements to our dash cam and, uh, body camera system, and the creation of a community camera project, just to kind, to kind of look into that. Uh, we incorporated these goals into our two thousand twenty-four action plan. Uh, we also incorporated them into the, the capital improvement plan and our twenty-four and twenty-five budget. So trying to work these to plan these things out, um, they've all been presented to council. Um, as you know, the budget is limited, uh, the grants are essential to, and, and grants are essential to, uh, assisting us in the funding of these goals. Uh, there's grant funding, uh, available through the federal government, the state government, and numerous foundations. Writing grant requests is time-consuming, and to do it well requires a specific, uh, skill set, uh, whi- which is built over time. Uh, we've completed, uh, some grants in-house, uh, like recently, we had the Marshall Community Foundation grant to fund the community engagement, uh, software program. So we submitted that grant, we got permission, submitted that grant. Um, the council approved, uh, however, that's kind of the exception on doing those in-house. Most grants require a bit more knowledge, skill, and significant amount of time towards the effort. Uh, to that end, in April, um, the, the police department hired, uh, the Battle Creek Community Foundation to assist us in, in writing grants, uh, for this next year. Uh, we've completed, so, you know, we've We've completed, so you know, we've completed these assessments, completed the plans, and now we're looking for the funding. So the grant submissions, of course, as you know, are required by council. So currently, we've identified two grants that we're requesting approval for submission. The first is M. Cole's Public Safety Academy Assistance Program. It's an in-house grant submission through the state of Michigan. The grant covers up to twenty-four thousand dollars for police academy expenses, along with the salary of the recruit while they're doing, going through the academy. So when we have an opening, we send, we can send them through. Currently have two positions saved at KCC's academy, starting in August. The funding would cover the cost of the academy and nearly all the salaries while the recruits are in the academy. So that's our first request. The second request is COPS Hiring Grant. This is a federal grant. The grant is prepared by the Battle Creek Community Foundation. This is a grant to fund community, community officer for up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over three years. The funding would cover about forty percent of a salary of an officer, officer's wages over those three years. In addition to those two submissions, we would like to request approval for anticipated submissions. We have set goals and plans for following projects, and we have, we've hired grant writers to find those, you know, the grants to fund these, these projects. And now we're just asking for permission to submit those grants for the following projects. Dash camera and body camera replacements. This was part of our CIP and the budget process that we, we put those in the budget and the CIP. And the replacement would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now we're just looking for those funds, trying to try and find grants for that. And then a consultant for building a camera project. We're trying to create a plan to kind of look forward and have a strategy to kind of combine our access control, alarms, video cameras, and all the city buildings and parks, along with a community camera project. So we're trying to get a consultant to kind of give us some vision to go forward, an overall strategy to move forward. So we're looking for grants for that project as well. And then lastly, the community camera project, which was part of the CIP and budget, that was an estimated cost of about two hundred and fifty thousand, looking at similar projects. So we're looking to seek grants for that as well. So we're asking for the, these anticipated submissions collectively to reduce the redundancy and to make the process more efficient by reducing the timeframe for grant submissions by our grant writers. So the budget impact of these, the anticipated budget impact is outlined in the report, but basically M. Cole's, the Public Safety Grant Assistance Program is about forty-eight, forty-eight thousand dollars that we would receive from that. The city would pay for the benefits and the additional cost of the position, but the cost, we would save that forty-eight thousand from, you know, and the rest of it would be absorbed by the budget in the existing police budget. The COPS Hiring Program, a hundred and twenty-five thousand over three years, forty percent of the salary. This grant would provide savings to the general fund since a third officer, since a patrol officer position that is currently vacant, it's budgeted at a hundred percent, obviously. Being awarded this grant would provide a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of savings over the next three years. And the anticipated grants that dash, dash cam and body camera replacement, it's estimated cost of a hundred and forty thousand. The grant budgeted revenues will cover the cost a hundred percent. The consultant for the building and camera project is estimated to be around ten thousand. The grant budgeted revenues will cover a hundred percent of the costs we're looking for. And then the community camera project estimated to be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The grant revenues anticipated to cover the hundred percent of the cost. So however, an additional expense in that covered by the grant would require approval, obviously, and a budget amendment by city council for that. The recommendation is to approve the grant submission for the M. Cole's Public Safety Academy Assistance Program grant, the COPS Hiring Program grant, and the dash camera and body camera replacement grant, the project consultant for the building and camera project grant, and the community camera project grant as presented and within the outlined budget restrictions for each grant.
Thank you, Chief. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the grant submission for the M. Cole's Public Safety Academy Assistance Program grant, the COPS Hiring Program grant, the dash camera, body camera replacement grant, the project consultant for building and camera project grant, and the community camera project grant as presented and within the budget outlined.
I have a motion. Any support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I just have one quick question, forgive me if it's in here and I missed it, but how much are we paying the Battle Creek Community Foundation for grant writing for these?
I believe we have a contract. I have to look at specifically. I think, I believe it was around three thousand dollars, three or four thousand dollars for three grants.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think these are great. I wish you luck. I hope we, we receive most or all of them. That'd be excellent. And just a reminder, the reason we have this process is so that staff and finance team is aware of potential grants that could be coming in. So as things are budgeted and and paid for, they're not caught by surprise when, when surprise checks show, show up. But I like being in the loop as well, knowing what you guys are going for and what's important to the program and to the department. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? So take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign? Motion passes. Next, city manager Derrick.
Yeah, so the last item for you tonight is the Verizon Water Tower Site Lease Extension. In November of nineteen ninety-eight, the city entered into a lease agreement with Century Cellular. It's now known as Verizon Wireless for space on the industrial road elevated water storage tank for the placement of cell equipment. As part of the lease agreement, Verizon Wireless pays the city an annual payment for use of the site. The two thousand and twenty-four payment is twenty thousand eighty-one dollars, and the current agreement is set to expire at the end of two thousand and twenty-seven. Last fall, Verizon Wireless contacted the city with interest in wanting to extend the lease agreement, but they did want to reduce the annual rent to just over sixteen thousand dollars per year. We rejected their request and after some negotiations, landed on extending the term for another five years with an additional fifteen years option, no reduction in the annual payment, and maintaining the rent escalator at two percent for each new year of the agreement. If approved, the new lease agreement would provide an annual rent payment to the general fund of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents, commencing on November one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Thereafter, the annual payment would increase by two percent over the previous annual rent amount for the next twenty years. If you would, we recommend that you approve the Second Amendment to the lease for the water tower space with Verizon Wireless as presented and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Well, I do like having good cell service, so I'm going to move that we approve the Second Amendment to the lease for the water tower space with Verizon Wireless as presented and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Any support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Do we have any other wireless providers leasing space from the city?
There is a second cellular provider that we have a similar agreement for.
Not seen any other comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign? Motion passes. That moves us down to public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak has two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Rebecca Sebring, Fredonia Township. I'm here to talk again about the communists you're gonna allow in with the Blue Oval Site that is connected to the Chinese Communist Party for real. They pretty much own Ford like they do GM. They bought them in two thousand and sixteen. Okay, these electric cars, they're not doing so well. I'm a motorhead. They weigh six thousand pounds. You have to change and get rid of all four tires every eight thousand miles. And then I'm hearing the brakes have to be replaced as well. And then also, now the mechanics are telling me that the rotors have to be replaced every year. You should not have to replace this amount of parts. And like I said, the emissions come out of the tires of the modern car versus a gas car of the same year. The gas car gives off less emissions than these electrical cars do. And who wants to get hit by six thousand pounds at fifty miles per hour, okay? And then also, I asked last time, when we go to the pumps, we pay tax on our road. Do they pay tax when they go to their little charging port and plug them in? I have nothing against them. Every motorhead likes something different, and that's fine. But seriously, shouldn't they be paying road tax? Can anybody answer this question? Because I am. All right. And then also with the Blue Oval Site, I want to say, you know that these plants, these battery plants, will be trickling lithium into the water sources. Battle Creek and Marshall will become saturated with lithium. There's no way I'm gonna even want to buy a coffee or get anything to eat in this town again. And my address, it says Marshall, even though I'm in the country. But I, there's no way I'm gonna want to eat or drink anything from either one of these two towns when they're putting lithium in it. And then I could go on more, but apparently I'm running out of time. Don't forget the World Economic Forum took over all U.S. citizens' medical last month. Means they can push a new pandemic and force you to do whatever they want, and the banks are now credit scoring.
Thank you.
Would.
That's fine. You're fine. Thank you. Anybody else?
Lynn Slight, five oh seven Fair Street. Six days ago marked the one-year anniversary of a really tragic day. Remember that day? May first, last year, there was a city council meeting, and the mayor, the city council, the clerk, they betrayed the citizens of Marshall. They betrayed the people of Marshall. The bill, the room the meeting was in couldn't even fit all of the people that wanted to come. I was there. I stayed the whole time, but I couldn't speak because the emotions I was feeling, it was like I could not believe the way that you were treating people. My husband had to hold me down because I was afraid that if I got up there, I was gonna completely blow a cord. It's been a whole year, and honestly, you know, what really caused this problem was not listening, and you're still not listening a whole year. I mean, like Barry said, holy crap. Lynn Slight, comment it. Woo! Do you give, do you really give a damn? We the people, we the people from Marshall, Michigan, we're not stupid. We're not stupid. We've got a lot of really smart people. I mean, holy crap. You know Victoria McGuffin? She knows more than you do. But you didn't listen to her. You didn't listen.
Thanks, Lynn. Anyone else?
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, again, six twenty-two West Green Street. Again, every time you constrain our public comment to a specific time, it's a act of misconduct in office. You know, it's unconstitutional. Article one, section five, I've said it many times. How will history look at what happened a year ago? Betrayed in May. The people in town are finally realizing how they have been gaslit, how dangerous, ultimately dangerous this whole project is gonna be to the integrity of the community in the way that the community members want to live their lives. Now, you know, what's gonna come of this? Well, we're already seeing the degradation of the traffic situation. And again, evidently, there have been long-term plans that were in the making that we're only let, let know about just recently. Now, it's all fine and good to pat each other on the back about the police and everything else, but the important thing about the police is that they effectively enforce the law concerning constitutional protections. And when you don't do that, you're not being good police officers. Look at MCL fifteen point one five one. Each one of you has taken an oath of office, and you should know the sole purpose of government is to aid the citizen in his exercise of life, liberty, or property, and everything else is encroachment and usurpation. Learn that.
Thank you, Barry. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Rick Sadler, Squaw Creek. Barry and Regis touched on, actually, a subject that I had been looking at all, all week, basically. And that's ethics and integrity. And Marcus Aurelius said that if it's not right, don't do it. If it's not true, don't say it. Well, there's been a lot of that not happening in this particular setting here. And I just don't understand why y'all can't grasp the fact that you're not acting in our best interests. And, and, you know, obviously, I'm running out of time again. So I wanna, I wanna end it with, with, with this, this quote. A single lie ruins the whole reputation of integrity. And I think that y'all's integrity is pretty much negligible at this point.
Would anybody else like to speak? See, now we'll move on to council and manager communications. Council member Gates.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Council member Karen.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Council member Chaney Huggett.
We had an airport board meeting tonight, or earlier today. It was a really energetic group. They did host a group of high school students on April twenty-fifth. The kids all went for a discovery flight. They also spoke with an airline captain about career opportunities, and they did a mock pre-flight inspection toward the aircraft maintenance shop. They're gonna have another event for another group of students tomorrow. They are also looking for another aircraft and another instructor, so they're growing that part of the business out there. And one other little thing, they are having a pancake breakfast. Everyone's invited, May eighteenth, from eight until eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager Perry.
I have nothing further to add. Thank you very much.
City clerk Eubanks.
We do have an election tomorrow, May seventh, from seven AM to eight PM. We will be at St. Mary's, and I hope everyone gets out to vote.
I'll echo that. Please get out to vote tomorrow. School Millich. I encourage you all to vote yes. It's imperative for our future of our children and our families and our community. Even if you have different opinions on athletics or the music programs or elementary schools or the city your school's in, it's all important and it's, it all rolls. elementary schools or the city your school's in, it's all important, and it's, it all rolls up into the greater good of our community. So I, I encourage you all to vote yes. We had a good work session earlier this evening with the joint master, joint master plan work session with the planning commission, and we had our guest speaker in from Progressive, progressive A and E. And they will be throughout their community over the next few months at different events and public events and getting public opinion through surveys and on hand, first-person response to get feedback for our future planning for our city. So if you see them anywhere, I encourage you to speak with them or fill out their surveys. And then nothing else for me tonight, so adjourn the meeting. Thank you.